And what I've learned from these ministries, particularly, I just got to meet Minister Williams a couple of nights ago, but working with these people, these are dedicated people that genuinely care about the welfare of their kids. Jamaica puts a high emphasis on education. This is a terrible situation. We know how resilient the Jamaican people are. Nobody saw this coming, but I am proud to be in this battle with our organization, with all of these other nonprofits and the ministry. They inspire us all the time. We have two of our children on the call tonight. They're movie stars. We did a, we did a video and it went viral and we're happy to have them. So I just wanted, before I stop, I just want to shout out to my team, you know, for Brianna McIntosh, Crystal, the way they put this program together, for Margie's Brain all the time, for Emma's getting herself trained in cyber safety and by an Irish group, who, so we can take the lead in protecting these kids. April is running around Denver to all the Samsung club, grabbing as many Samsung tablets as she can. The list goes on and on. We have a dedicated group here and we're in it to win it. And we're not leaving Westmoreland and we're not leaving our partner schools until the job is finished. That I can tell you. So without further ado, I just want to get things rolling by introducing our featured speaker, the Honorable Fable Williams, Minister of Youth Education and Information. She's a chartered financial analyst by profession. She has an MBA with concentration in finance from the Wharton Business School at Penn. She has a Bachelor of Arts degree cum laude in economics from Harvard University and Cambridge. Minister Williams has experience in fixed income investments, portfolio management, investment research. Has had a distinguished career in several high level international and local financial organizations. Minister Williams is a member of Parliament for the St. Andrew Eastern constituency, married to Leo Williams, lucky man, and they have two children. Welcome and thank you so much, Minister. It's all yours.
Okay. Thank you. Good night, everyone. I, Gary, can you tell me if you're hearing me?
I'm hearing you loud and clear.
All right. Let me begin by acknowledging our permanent secretary, Dr. Grace McLean. I know she's on this call. Let me acknowledge as well Father Cohen and to say thanks for just covering us with God's grace. Let me acknowledge representatives from the Estet Trust, Need Friends of Jamaica, ladies and gentlemen. But most of all, let me say a big thank you to you, Gary, for helping our children in Jamaica for so many years. When I Googled you, I found out that on your 60th birthday, you gave up personal gifts and asked your friends to help you build a computer lab at the Little Bay All Age Infant School, All Age and Infant School. And, you know, I thought that that was just so out of this world, that someone from another country would take such an interest in our children in Jamaica to, to, to do that, to make that sacrifice. And I want to especially thank you for doing that. I know that you've targeted Westmoreland as the parish in which you would, are doing the work and would want to continue doing the work. For us, Westmoreland is an interesting parish. It has a very fascinating history. You know, a little bit of the history of it is on, obviously it's in the public domain and, you know, it's easily accessible and persons can learn that Westmoreland was where Christopher Columbus stopped. That Westmoreland had one of the first Spanish settlements. And according to the history that's written about Westmoreland, it was the riots at the Frome Sugar Estate in 1938 that changed the course of Jamaica's history. Coming out of that, we would have gotten the right to vote and we would have gotten a new constitution that was developed. So Westmoreland is, occupies an important position in this country's history. In addition to the history, Westmoreland is known for having fertile, fertile lands. It is known for tourism, of course, Negri. Tourist destination in Jamaica. And from an education perspective, there are many schools in Westmoreland, primary schools. There are several high schools there as well. And so to have you focus on as many schools as you have done, it is significant for us at the ministry. You mentioned connectivity, that these schools all asked for connectivity. And just to give a perspective on what we're doing in Jamaica, you are right. When the COVID pandemic hit, Jamaica, like other countries, you know, suspended schools, the children coming into the physical classrooms, we had to move to other modalities. We had to begin to broadcast lessons on, or, you know, over the air, free to air television on cable networks. We had, we put some on the many radio stations that we have here. And then we developed a learning kit in the event there are students who did not have access to television or, you know, any of the other modalities. And we ensured that our teachers were in touch with them. That continued from March into the end of the school year then. Then we got into the summer and we had every hope and expectation that we would begin school in the nor, in the normal way in September. That did not happen. Schools were pushed back to October 5th. By that time, an election had taken place. The administration that I'm a part of came back to power. There were some shifts in terms of ministers. And the Prime Minister sent me to the Ministry of Education, Youth and Information, along with a junior minister, Minister Morgan, to be there to lead that ministry that has a portfolio that consists of education, youth and information. So I've been at the ministry since the middle of September, September 14th, to be exact. So you can imagine just getting into the ministry and staring at an October 5th date for schools to be reopened and being in the midst of the pandemic. So all eyes were on us as to what we were going to do. So having come from the Ministry of Science, Energy and Technology to the Education Ministry, I would have brought with me significant knowledge in the technology field. And so when I got there, I began to learn about the capabilities at the Ministry of Education. And try, in my effort to try to pull things together, and I learned that one, the ministry had already went ahead and had an agreement with Google for its learning management system. So check for that. I also know, coming from the Ministry of Science, Energy and Technology, because we have an entity there that supports the Ministry of Education. The entity is called eLearning. They are the technology arm of the Ministry of Education. So I would have been very familiar with the procurement efforts of that entity. And so I, I knew at the time that all the teachers, practically all the teachers in Jamaica would have been given a tablet as part of their wage agreement. So that's well over 20,000 teachers. I would have known as well that there were tablets that were procured for our students who are on government assistance, some 30,000 tablets. And, you know, I knew as well that there were many, many educational software, many, many educational websites that would be available to the students. And so together with the, the, you know, the senior level staff at the ministry, the PS, education officer and other technical persons there, we put together an online scenario. So as COVID, then as the COVID numbers continued to climb in Jamaica, we continued to gain confidence that we could introduce the online, the online modality. And that we did. On October 5th, we declared schools to be opened, opened. But we, we pointed all our children towards three modalities, which would be the online modality. We kept, we kept broadcasting lessons as well. And we also kept the learning kit. So three modalities were available to them. I'm sorry. Okay. So of course, once you did that, all the focus was on online. And we knew that there was just a lack of tablets in the system. So of course, activated eLearning, who, they were the ones who did the distribution across the school system. We, the ministry made sure that it, we sorted out the issue of the affordability, meaning the data plans and, and ensure that when our students and teachers access the learning management system, that it would not be a burden to them. So the ministry absorbed the cost of doing so. So in a very short period of time, many of the variables came together. So we were able to, to begin the distribution of tablets, new tablets. There were already about 18,000 tablets in the school system and those were made available to the students. Add on top of that, the 30,000 tablets that we got, began the distribution of, so you're above 48,000 tablets. So children, students could begin to go online right away as soon as they received the tablets because the ministry has, you know, an eResource app that's in the App Store that they could download and, and have access to the virtual classrooms and so on. So we, we began that and rolled it out in very short order. On top of that too, we recognized that there were families that, that are needy families who are not on government assistance, but indeed they need some help to have their, their children get a device. And so we designed a program to offer those families a $20,000 Jamaican voucher that they could go to selected vendors and buy a tablet. If they wish to buy a laptop, they would have to make up the difference. So that program was launched. As of last Friday, 13,000 families were eligible to get this voucher. And we're going to start distributing those vouchers and they can go and start to make their purchase. The program is still ongoing until the end of December. Our goal is to make it available to 36,000 families. So come the end of December, we will know what that figure is. Layered on top of that just as well, we launched an initiative called the One Laptop or Tablet Per Child in Jamaica, in which we had a broad appeal to corporate Jamaica, to our diaspora, to our international partners to come on board and help us, you know, with our One Laptop Per Child initiative. We were simply saying, all students in Jamaica should have a device, whether it's a tablet or a laptop. And as an individual, it's simple. You, you, do you, you just, you know, one, one laptop or tablet per child. And we've seen just a significant uptake in that across Jamaica as well as, as entities have come on board to help us. Of course, the tablet or the laptop is the first step. You have the issue of connectivity, which is, you know, it's, it's the cry now, connectivity. There are many communities across Jamaica, especially in rural Jamaica, that still do not have activity, spotty or inadequate or intermittent connectivity. And there are others who are doing okay. So it's important, that part, that variable in the puzzle is an important variable, the connectivity variable. And so we've been looking at a number of different solutions. And most recently, a provider, we gave the provider to begin satellite connectivity at 100 of our schools. And we're happy to report that that was completed. And, you know, the schools are up and running and there are small groups of children who come to the schools at different points in time. They're encouraged to download, especially the ministry's app. Once you download it, you can have access to a lot of educational resource that you don't need the internet once you downloaded that. So, you know, we have been taking the action that, that, that we can take, given the circumstances that we are in. So the connectivity is an issue. I spoke already about the affordability of it and, and the efforts of the ministry to ensure that when a student and, that our students and our teachers can access the learning management platform without having to have credit. Well, they have to have a data plan. They have to have a minimum amount on the data plan, but they're, they will not see a reduction in that, in, in, in their data plan. And another part of the, the puzzle is just the level of competence of the teachers with regards to using the technology. And well over 20,000 teachers were trained to use the learning management system. They are getting better every day. We followed the numbers in terms of teachers who log on, classes they create, students who log on and so on. We're seeing a greater adoption of the technology. Actually, there are schools in Jamaica, primarily our high schools, there's several high schools where they're seeing upwards of 80, 90% of their students online. So, and even some of those schools have asked to remain online during this pandemic that we're going through, even if they are eligible to come back to face to face. And we're, we're supporting that as well. So as we move along, we still have not made up, we, we're not there yet in terms of ensuring all our students have a device. So we still have got to work on that. And, but I'm, I'm happy to see, as I said before, companies coming on board, individuals making their own private donation and so on. The, the big issue now is the connectivity. There's a major project underway from the government to implement across Jamaica, a national broadband infrastructure. You know, early days yet because they're just in the early consultation phase of that. There are many parts to be pulled together there. So that is happening. In the interim, as I said, we have to look at solutions until that longer term project comes on board. And that's why we have looked at satellite connectivity. We're looking at some other vendors with their, with their products to see how best we can utilize those in the schools and begin to think about how do we broaden that into communities where the children are. So that's, that's where we are in turn, from a technology perspective. Every time I speak, I say that even though COVID forced us into this accelerated adoption of technology in education, beyond COVID, technology will continue to be a permanent part of the education system. You know, research has shown that if used wisely, technology can help to enrich the learning, can help to accelerate what, you know, students are, and at the end of the day, can help with them having better grades. And there have been many, you know, there's research that supports this. So we know that it's not just the technology. It's the motivation of the student. It is the combination of the teacher. It's, it's what's available for the students in terms of educational websites. And so it's a combination of all of those that in the end can make a difference in what our children are learning and how well they learn it and how prepared they are to, to become of age in the 21st century. I'm sure you've read many, many articles talking about the skills that will be needed in the 21st century and how different they will be than skills in other century. So that's what we're hoping to equip our student with. In Jamaica, there is a significant digital divide that we often talk about. While we are doing something about it and it begins with ensuring that our students have the devices, that they have some reasonable, you know, bandwidth or connectivity, that we have the educational sites for them to access, that the teachers are trained in the technology, that it is, it's used within the school and at home and when the students are at home, that we provide them with, you know, support in terms, if they have a problem with the device or accessing any particular site, that we teach them how to be safe when they go online, that we build a device management system around them to, to, to help in terms of the devices that would come on. Most recently, we struck a partnership with Microsoft and Microsoft has come on board to allow our students to have access to 500,000 licenses of Microsoft suite of products. So Word, Excel, Teams. So there is a lot that is, is going on in the education sector. I think what's happening is a game changer for our students in the sector. And that in short order, we will see positive results from what we're doing. As I often say when I speak, the 10-year-old today that we give a device to and that 10-year-old learns more, become, you know, savvy with the technology is going to be the 20-year-old in 2030, the year when Jamaica, the year Jamaica is targeted to become a first world country. I don't believe that without our, our citizens having knowledge of technology and are comfortable using it, accessing government services, accessing financial services or health services, having the skills that businesses need when they leave, they, when our students leave the education sector and they walk into the world of work, you know, being very comfortable using Excel or creating a document in PowerPoint or, you know, writing a letter in Word document and, you know, all the other tools that are there. I think that they will be more attractive to employers, you know, coming out of our school system, very, very adept at those productivity tools. And so for us, again, like I said, COVID forced us into an accelerated adoption and we believe that's a good thing. There is opportunity in every crisis and that's the opportunity that that we see as technology embedded in education in Jamaica. There is so much more now that we're going to be able to do than, than any time in, in the past. So we'll, you know, I am, I'm thrilled. I'm excited to be here at this moment in time. And, you know, I feel like I am, I am Usain Bolt, running as fast as I can to, to get our students online and, and, you know, becoming familiar with the technology. Because we know that there are students in Jamaica on the one end for whom a laptop, a tablet, smartphone is just, you know, second nature. They've always had it. They grew up with it. Their parents thought nothing to give them the device and ensure that they're connected. They do their schoolwork. They do, you know, they, they use it for entertainment. And there are other kids who, they probably never come within a mile of, of a tablet yet alone having the thought that they could have one for themselves. And so it is, it is this beginning to close, to eliminate that digital divide that is exciting to me because I can see the potential for our students. Two, three years down the road, we're not talking about, you know, a century here or even, we're not, or, or even a decade. We're talking, you know, much shorter than that because these children are coming of age in the technology age. And then so we're helping to enable them. And so I like the focus of Cornerstone. It, it aligns very well with what we're doing at the ministry. And I look forward to working with Cornerstone on the 11 schools that they've partnered with. And, you know, this is just the beginning. So Gary, I want to thank you so much for the outreach, for being in touch with the ministry to let us know what you're doing. And as we go forward, we will, you know, you will let us know and we'll figure out what the ministry, what help the ministry can provide to schools in Westmoreland. You know, one of our star tourism areas. Thank you, ladies and gentlemen.
Thank you so much, Minister Williams, for your candor, for your forthrightness, for informing us exactly what has happened, where we are. And, and I'm just grateful that you're on the call. You see two of your students are on the call with us and I hope they're drinking all of this in. I, I have a feeling when this is all over, our See Better, Learn Better Vision Screening Program is going to be needed like never before with all this extra screen time. We will be ready. Anyway, I want to, I want to keep moving and turn it over to another distinguished guest. I'm introducing you to Ms. Nicolette Williams. Ms. Williams is from the Jamaican Embassy in DC. She is the Minister Counselor with Responsibility for Trade, Economic and Diaspora Affairs. And she's been a staunch supporter of Cornerstone for many years. Thanks for being here.
I know Nicolette very well. Hi, Nicolette.
Hi, Minister. How are you? Good to see you.
Same here.
Minister Williams, Minister of Education, Youth and Information, Mr. Gary Robinson, founder of Cornerstone Jamaica and members of your team, Friends of Cornerstone, Friends of Jamaica, distinguished guests. Ladies and gentlemen, a warm, good evening to everyone. I'm honored to bring greetings this evening on behalf of Her Excellency Audrey Marks, Jamaica's Ambassador to the United States, who was regrettably not able to make it this evening. And also on behalf of the, the entire Embassy of Jamaica team. We are grateful to have been invited to participate in this virtual event, which is being held to advocate for the needs of our nation's children. I believe that the theme, "Every Child Must Learn: Building Community and Connecting the Future," is indeed timely. "Every Child Must Learn" has long been a mantra of the Ministry of Education. Every Child Must Learn has long been a mantra of the Ministry of Education. Of the fact that we cannot advance or achieve vision twenty thirty unless current and future generations receive a solid education. Recent events have posed a significant threat to this goal. We have witnessed how COVID nineteen has opened the entire country, leaving no sector untouched in its wake. Including the education sector. So the theme which will guide our discussions this evening also demonstrates that in confronting the challenges facing Jamaica. Including those which impact our precious treasures or children, we must use a multi-dimensional approach. We need all hands on deck. It is against this background that we wish to commend Mister Robinson and his team of dedicated individuals. For their foresight and vision in undertaking this very useful and important initiative. Extending a lifeline, as it were, to a vulnerable segment of our population. We also know the synergy between this initiative and the ongoing initiative recently launched by the Education Ministry. A device for every child bridging the digital divide. We at the embassy recall our first meeting with Mister Robinson a few years ago. During which he shared his vision for Cornerstone and the impact of its work in Jamaica. We were and continue to be touched by his sheer passion. Love and devotion to a country from which he did not originate. But to which he feels a very strong and deep connection. Many, many thanks Gary to you and your team. Please know that we really and truly appreciate your generosity. And as we approach the season of Advent, let me extend on behalf of Ambassador Marks and the entire staff at the embassy. A happy, holy and safe Christmas and bountiful blessings for twenty twenty one. Thank you.
Thank you so much. Uh, before we, before we go any further, I want to acknowledge, there's four pages of people here. But I spotted our Regional Four Director, Dr. Michelle Pennock is here. And also Dr. Cassanne Troop, who is a rock star. If you want to see dedication and you want to see passion, go on YouTube and listen to her speak. I know she inspires me every time I listen to her. So without further ado, I'm going to introduce you to our Education Chair. And she's also the Program Director of our Cornerstone Connects. A student from Manning High, now a teacher at Manning High. And her middle name is Service. From the first day I met her, Ms. Jessica Davidson.
Good evening, everybody. It's so wonderful to see and meet with everybody here. My name is Jessica Davidson and I'm the Cornerstone Director of Cornerstone Connects Education Program. Minister Williams, current Secretary McLean, our education officers, friends and family of Cornerstone. Visitors, guests, good evening. Now, my few words are going to be few. And when Gary says Service is my middle name, I like to say I am a warrior for a better Jamaica. And being a part of this space here ensures that I am that and I do that. So on the Cornerstone Connects, in the short space of time we had. Since the pandemic started, we were able to connect our eleven partner schools and bring them online. Distribute tablets and we are now in the embryonic stages of a rollout of our Cyber Save Yourself. Program. So you find that Cornerstone is doing its best to meet everybody, every child. Because no child shall be left behind. As our philosopher, John Dewey said. Education is not just about preparation for life. Education is about life itself. So when we invest in our children, it is transformative, not for them, but it is transformative for future and present generations. I will leave you with those words. Thank you so much, Gary.
Jessica, short but sweet. Um, I would also, next, we're going to go to the vicar of St. James. The chairman of one of our schools revival, the gentleman who gave us that beautiful prayer at the beginning, Father Colin King.
Good evening, everyone, and uh, all protocol observed. I appreciate uh, the opportunity to speak here. And to be in such uh, august and awesome company with everyone who's here. And I, I'm kind of the new kid on the block to uh, Cornerstone Jamaica. And um, it's been an awesome experience to see the way this. In the midst of when the world was standing still and we all had to stand apart, Cornerstone Jamaica came together and, and did a dance, if you will, pivoting every which way. In order to address both what Minister Williams said, as well as Ms. Nicolette uh, Williams has addressed as well. The reality of, of on the ground, of the lived experience of so many of our students. Of course, this pandemic has brought the world to a standstill, but that's not stopped Cornerstone Jamaica. And again, as a new, new member here, that I've been in awe of the service and the dedication. Of so many people in this group and in this organization, that at a time in most people's lives. Where they're looking at how do I, at further my career, how do I further my ambitions and dreams and hopes and schemes? To see so many people saying, let me figure out how to help kids in Western, uh, Westmoreland and Hanover. Let me figure out how the problems that are seeming so amountable and uh, uh. Abundant everywhere of how we can come together and how we can move together through these difficult moments. And in, in a special way, uh, you know, I think this, this really shows us the ways in which. Psalm one hundred and eighteen truly i- is, is the motto of this group. That the stone that was rejected by the builders has become the cornerstone. That such a simple but profound uh, verse from the Hebrew scriptures. That we see the ways in which all of us can come together and to remember and to work for other people. That's something that can easily be forgotten, a groups of people who can easily be moved through and, and overlooked. And that we're coming here to build this twenty, vision of twenty thirty. And I, I, I referenced twenty thirty and a lot of the work I do, I know uh, as a pastor. And looking at uh, as I am, that you know, goals one, two and three of twenty thirty. Directly tie into what we're doing here, that Jamaicans are empowered to achieve their fullest potential. That Jamaican security, society is secure, cohesive and just, and that the economy is prosperous. And even in the midst of this pandemic, these goals can still be achieved. And, and again, what I've said is, I've just been in awe at the ways in which. Cornerstone Jamaica, the people who are here have been able to make this occur and to keep pushing forward in the midst of these difficulties. In fact, I, I met Gary for the first time shortly before he was coming to Revival Primary School to install internet. Um, and uh, just a short video conference. And as soon as I met Mark and Jessica and a few others, uh, within a few weeks, if even that, maybe even days. The entire pivot occurred of Cornerstone Jamaica to move away from just installing. Internet to schools, to getting internet to the children at home, because that very difficult decision that had to be made. And then no sooner was that done than the realities of connectivity occurred in Cornerstone Jamaica, once again, doing their dance. Was able to pivot and start work, reaching out to students who through even geographic realities have a hard time connecting to the internet. It's just dance, I don't know how else to say it. Uh, this dance of Cornerstone Jamaica through this pandemic. That's been able to reach out and to continue to work with and for the children who can easily be forgotten. That children who in reality could be rejected, we're building this society upon. And that's a great witness, a great thing of what I'm so excited to be part of this group for. And so, you know, just in conclusion, that as the world stood still and as we all had to stand apart. Cornerstone Jamaica came together and with a pivot here and a pivot there and, and doing all sometimes it looking like a whirling dervish. But we're able to continue to make an impact that, God willing, will last for generations. And that in this moment of crisis, the name Cornerstone Jamaica will be remembered as people who step forward to respond generously. Thank you.
Thank you, Father. You're killing me. Uh, next up, we have one of our other frontline warriors as Jessica is. This is Mister Karen King, current principal of Little Bay. I just want to say, he was the guy you might have seen on his motorbike delivering lessons before he had any connectivity to the students at home. Take it away, Mister King.
And all the other hardworking members of the team, thank you um, for the invitation to give a reflection just on Little Bay. And the partnership that Cornerstone Jamaica has played. As you would have known since the pandemic, the pandemic, uh, the school was here, we had some challenges. In terms of distribution of work to the students and equity and accessibility is at the forefront. Of our institution and we went out on the bike and trying to deliver work to all our students. Thereafter, Gary came on board and they were there long before I was at Little Bay. Of course, it was mentioned that he was instrumental in the computer room. And they came and they ensured that we had internet. We were one of the first schools. Uh, in Jamaica, in the Caribbean. So that's very historical for us. And we're very grateful, very thankful for Cornerstone Jamaica for the hardware that they are doing. In addition to that though, I think a lot of things wouldn't have been accomplished without leadership. And I've always said, you know, as principals, we can't accomplish a lot without leadership. And in by so reason for our own director, Dr. Michelle Pennock and Mrs. Brown and Ms. Sims. Who oversee the eleven schools, uh, they have been partnering, cooperating and collaborating with Cornerstone. And I just want to thank them and, you know, commend them openly for the level of dedication and commitment. I've seen rain and Cornerstone Jamaica, they are out there. I remember Jessica coming to our school in the rain and. The valley with everything that's happening um, there. So I want to say a big thank you to Cornerstone for the level of dedication and commitment that they have been doing since the internet at Little Bay. And even for the other schools, eleven schools in the area, a lot of things have changed. It means now that, that gap where you have many students wouldn't have the ability to connect are now able to connect. And we're appreciative for that. But one other thing that strikes me about Cornerstone, Minister, and I should point that out to you is. The level of response, dedication and commitment. And just how they get things done in a very timely manner, in terms of clearing the things, some customs, getting it to the students. Going out there in the rain, uh, when it's the stakeholders partnering with the ministry to get this kind of thing done. It means, you know, you can really see where their heart and the vision is. So, you know, on behalf of all the principals of the eleven schools, the regional director. Our hardworking education officer, parents, community members and students. I want to openly say to Cornerstone Jamaica, thank you for the hardware that you're doing for our community, for our nation and our society. Thank you once again.
Uh, thank you very much, Mister King. Um, we appreciate the love fest. We are here though for, for more information and but, and again, before I go any further, I have to, I have to shout it out. Just as you mentioned to Mrs. Jacqueline Brown, Susan Sims, our education officers that we're working with. Also Nicola Shakes Wilson, our literacy person. I, I cannot stress enough, these people are working morning, noon and night. That's, it's, and all we're trying to do is, is push up the west and try to level the playing field out a bit. One more thank you before we go any further, Mister Chris Daring, uh, who, who is, who is a, a ReadyNet and, and Ready TV and ReadyNet. He is, he is the one providing us the satellite dish equipment. And, and tonight he has graciously allowed us to be on his TV networks. So we appreciate you, Chris. And, and Mister Casanova, thank you very much. Now we're going to go over to uh, Mister, the, the minute. The Member of Parliament from Western Westmoreland, Mister Moreland Wilson, welcome sir.
Hi Gary. Hi Gary, hi everyone. Um, want to say, let me start off by acknowledging my colleague. Um, Minister Pavel Williams and I hear Grace McLean is on the call. Um, want to say hello to you as well. Not sure who else is on the call because it's, when I look, it's about eighty-three participants. So this is a town hall meeting indeed, Gary. You, you did it again. Um, so. Um, I want to say welcome to all my distinguished guests and Jamaicans. Um, I am more than listening, the MP representing Westmoreland Western. And you know, out the gate, I want to say congratulations, Gary. Um, when I took over the seat back in September, you made contact and. We have done some partnerships since then. It has been tremendous. Um, and I see the work that you're doing aligns pretty well with my overall strategy for education. Um, and for me, I think I'm speaking to the converted when I say for me, education is the key to success. And I plan as a, as the MP representing this area, this constituency. To ensure that we put that on the front burner and we pursue that strategy in terms of having it as one of our main pillar for development. Um, I took note of some of what the minister said. Um, I endorse her, her statement full-heartedly. And I'm encouraged by the, the discussion that we're having so far. In that we see technology and the digital divide has held back a lot of small developing countries such as Jamaica. Um, when you look at what COVID has done, it has basically forced us to. Digitize and move our overall education strategy in a new and novel direction. Um, yes, it has displaced a lot of our traditional means of delivery. But it has also opened this massive opportunity for us to get tablets and computers in the hands of, of our kids. So no longer are they focusing on just having a phone to play games, but you're looking at phones as an education tool. Which widens the, the prospect for them to acquire even deeper knowledge into their particular area or discipline. So it's, it's very new and novel and um, Corona has, has, what I would say, put a lot of strain. Financial and otherwise. So partnership with entities such as yourself, um, Gary is welcome. And I'm also very encouraged by how enthusiastic your team is and yourself, Gary. And you know, how you, you continue to um, give me those calls and send me those messages. Even when I'm in parliament, you know, saying, Moreland, this is important, you need to get on this. Uh, but i- it goes to show the passion that you have and we need passionate people like you to, to pursue these. These generational issues that we have been having in, in small countries such as Jamaica. And I'm pretty sure they exist in other regions of the world. Um, and I want to shout out as well to Felicia, who you will know, because upon taking office. Um, I created a foundation called Educhest Foundation, which focuses on delivering training. And you know, acquiring and developing partnerships so we can get more tablets, you know, get more laptops. And also to develop programs that are not in the traditional areas. So the three key areas that I'm looking for is app development, software development and animation. Those are the three areas that Educhest will be focusing on and I will be doing everything to ensure that some success. Some success is, is brought to bear in, in my constituency. Um, I have, you know, four to five years to deliver those objectives. But I can see with partnership with, with, you know, entities such as Cornerstone. narrative, you can do animations around an ancient story and rolling cards and et cetera, et cetera. Creativity has really no bounds. So I'm I'm hoping that for the very near future, we will continue to work together in delivering these tablets. I hope to see your overall strategy for the next three years. I, based on the projections with the with the vaccines, I don't see us prolonging Corona for another two years, even though we have to be quite careful at this moment. But we'd also want to see a medium term strategy from Cornerstone and see how we fit within that strategy. And also, you know, I hope that you you'll continue to work with Felicia, who is really my right hand when it comes to Educhest to to get things going. And we ourselves, we take directives from the ministry, you know, recently that she gave out some vouchers. We were fortunate enough to get a few of those. They continue to do stellar work in terms of providing guidance and leadership as it relates to the the ministry's strategy. And the minister herself has been doing tremendous work since she got in there just, you know, two months, went into three months now. So I see I see the partnership and I see the the overall push. I want to shout out to Mr. King, Karen King. We have been working together even prior to me becoming an MP. He reached out and we collaborated on a few actual activities. And I do appreciate the work of Ready TV and a few others like Digicel, who have really stepped up to the plate during this crisis. So I don't want to go any further. I just want to say, great work, guys. And I stand ready to work with you. I also stand ready to align our strategies and ensure that we have some commonality in terms of delivering a new form of society that we are all, you know, hoping to achieve.
Thank you so much, MP Wilson. Typically, our meetings last one hour, but this is such an August, a great group. We're going to spend another half hour, if you don't mind, Chris, whoever wants to stay. We'd like to do a Q and A. We had several questions prepared and we're planning on taking questions from the audience. But I I have a feeling there's a lot of things that want to be said, so we're just going to narrow it to a couple of questions. But I just want to point out one more thing that's very important to Cornerstone, and that is cyber safety. We all we all know as adults the importance of it. And and I and I'm talking to you now, Oliver and Carly. It's really, really important. There are a lot of dangers lurking on the internet. Times 250,000 children in Jamaica who aren't used to all this screen time. We intend to take the lead nationwide in protecting these children. On the call, Emma, if you'd just like to say hello. I know that we're we're setting up a meeting with the ministry and we will make a presentation. She's worked long and hard at putting this together. Emma, you want to say hello for a minute before we go on the Q and A?
Sure. Hi. Good evening, everyone. Good evening, Minister Williams. I just want to say that, you know, in the first couple of months of distance learning, I noticed that the kids were socializing more online because they were stuck at home. And internet is very useful. And as Minister Williams says, if used wisely, then your child is golden. But the issue lies in the fact that the children are not yet equipped with the tools to be cyber safe. Just for for instance, I'm going to give you, imagine someone taking a picture of your child in an ambiguous situation and posting it online. Or a stranger using your child's information and interests, which your child has posted, in order to manipulate and scam your child. There are lots of other things can happen. Bullying happens online, threats, people will, you know, do terrible things and threaten to, you know, kill themselves. All sorts of terrible things. And these are instances that I've actually witnessed, right? So either nasty comments made in a school chat or friends have told me that their kid is playing Fortnite and somebody else threatens their kid. So it's really quite horrible. But more astonishingly, your child could be the one that's also doing these things. So these things can happen to your child. But your child could be doing these things too. And that can leave a marred digital footprint that can affect your college entry and future job applications for life. So all of this is breaches to are breaches to cyber safety. So about seven months ago, I started thinking seriously about cyber safety. And having met the team at Cornerstone, I joined forces with them, got trained in cyber safety by another nonprofit organization called Cyber Safe Ireland. This actually for five years and I've created an online program, which will take the form of interactive webinars for children from grades one all the way up to grade thirteen. And these webinars will give them the tools to safely navigate through cyberspace in a stronger and smarter way. And we at Cornerstone really believe that this is key to keeping the children safe and just making them smarter so that they don't get conned or manipulated or run into any worse form of danger online. So that's about it.
Thank you. Thank you, Emma. I'm going to turn it over to Crystal. We we've, Crystal, why don't you, why don't you ask number three, why don't you throw it out there? And let's let's use that as a toss up question. Anybody is, anybody on the call who feels qualified to respond, please do so. Go ahead, Crystal.
Okay. Hi. Good evening. Good evening. I believe all the protocols have been respected already. Good evening again to Minister Favel Williams. I just wanted to ask because we wonder about the inequalities that are present right now and how they're growing wider during the COVID-19 pandemic and how it is that we can help shrink that wide opportunity gap for the future. Because as we have all noticed, you know, there are the children who have and those who have not. What can we do to shrink that education gap in the future or that opportunity gap in the future? And how can we further support our teachers, our principals, our students in our partner schools with the needs, the resources that they need? Oh, I think
Go ahead, Minister.
You gotta unmute.
Okay. I know our our chief education officer is on, I believe. Kassan, are you still there?
You are.
Yep.
Kassan?
Stop here.
Okay. You want to take that question?
Kassan, you want me to repeat the question?
I'm having some connection.
Yeah, okay. Does anybody else want to address this question? It's it's about the the gap widening and how how we, Cornerstone and other people can help to try to narrow that gap going forward.
Go ahead, her hand.
Okay, so
Go ahead, Minister.
Right. So you have the gap, the education gap. When you look within Jamaica, across our school system, and it results from all children not having an equal opportunity. So you would find a major difference in a child out in a rural area in terms of their access to education. Think kind of pre-COVID, I'm making a distinction, pre-COVID. So for for example, if you looked at two primary schools, one in in Kingston, another one in rural Jamaica, chances are in that Kingston school, you will have teachers who are who are there and available in a lot of different subject areas. When you look out into our rural parts, you may not find that. So you may not find a good science teacher, for example, whereas you would in a school that's that's in the the urban center. So that creates a gap, you know, for our children. And we see that in the in the scores in terms of the 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 primary exit profile scores, which is an exam that primary school children take that would that will determine pretty much which high schools they go to. Because the high schools look at the scores and they have, you know, they'll have a certain level of students that they take. So there is that gap. Layer on top of that, and you see that we have an issue that we have to deal with quickly so that we don't get into a permanent situation. So the the connectivity issue that Gary mentioned, it's real in our in our schools, in our communities. We see technology as a way to help that student in rural Jamaica who may not have access to a science teacher. But given access to technology via a device and connectivity with the help of the teacher in the classroom, that child or those children can begin to have some learning in science, using that as an example. So to the extent that we're able to really enrich the the we're really able to have our classrooms so enabled with technology of our teachers and our children, we believe we'll be doing two things. Helping to close the education gap as well as the kind of technology gap.
Okay.
The digital divide.
Yeah, I have I have one more question before we we close it out. And and last week I was on a radio program in New York, being interviewed by Mr. Erwin. And and he was, he was mentioning something, this was IRE Jam Radio, I believe it was. And he was mentioning something I thought was very interesting. Here is the, here is the question. We're talking about engaging the rest of the of Jamaican diaspora. He suggested maybe Jamaican high school alumni associations, even though we work in primary schools, in terms of how the question is, how can we engage more with with Americans, Canadians, Europeans, diaspora? We know they're all over the world. Mr. Richard Guy, an eighty-seven year old from Yellowknife, Canada is on the call, one of our early donors. Okay. And and I'm just proud of him. And I'm here. And while I'm here, I just have to say a shout out to Cecilia and Ian Levy from Kingston, another early supporters I'm seeing there on the call. Samantha Mahfood runs Food for the Poor in Toronto. I think Food for the Poor is is the largest NGO in Jamaica, I believe, is their second largest target. We've got a lot of great people on this call. The question is, what can we do to access more diaspora worldwide and and keep the focus, in our case, on Western Jamaica? We know that most of the time with 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 the diaspora, they like to support the parish they're from, and I totally get that. But again, we need to call attention to the gap in in the West. The reason we do what we do in the West is because the ministry can only do so much and they're coming there eventually. We just don't want our schools to have to wait as long as it takes. So I'm just trying to figure out ways to engage more people around the world. And and we're thinking about alumni associations. Anybody have any thoughts about that?
Well, I know that we have tapped into our council general. And I know I don't know if Nicolette is still on. We would have done a town hall meeting with our council general in New York. And she would have, you know, connected others in in different parts of the US and around the world. That's one way to do it. Tapping into the Alumni Association is another way. Tapping into organizations that have of Jamaicans who are abroad, organizations who, you know, have some affinity to Jamaicans. I think that's the way that we have to do it. I don't know. I'll see if there are any other ideas. But that's how we've been pursuing it thus far.
Well, thank you. And I'm just seeing on the chat for, thank you, Leslie Anne Samuel, UJAA, an umbrella organization of sixty-one alumni associations representing seventy schools. That's a very good head start. Okay. And I just want to, I I don't think Erwin Clare is on the call. I was so impressed with him and his love for Jamaica. He's he's in the tri-state area of New York now. It's a very cool radio station. And it's nice. And thanks to Oliver and Carly. I don't know if they're in bed yet or they're still on the call, but they really called attention to what we're working on. I think we should get, we're going to end it very shortly. But before we do, I want to thank everybody for coming on the call and turn it over to our vice chairman for a moment. Kate Tony. It's been it's been a fast hour and twelve minutes, which we had hoped for and expected. And we're going to do
Hi, everyone. Like Gary said, my name is Kate Tony. I'm the vice chairman at Cornerstone Jamaica. When I heard Gary just say my name, I knew that I was coming on at the end and I had no idea we were already at the end. This hour flew by. I was crying at one point. I was laughing at one point. I had chills at one point. And so I just want to say thank you to everyone that came on this call tonight. There are four pages on a Zoom call. I think this is the largest Zoom call I've ever been a part of. And I really, really appreciate all the words that were said tonight and everything that was just talked about and all of the kind words about moving forward. And speaking of moving forward, I see a lot of people in the chat right now asking to help. And that's kind of where I wanted to talk to you guys about what we can do next. So one of the best things that you guys could do for Cornerstone and that we that then would in return help out the kids is to go onto our website, cornerstonejamaica.org. Someone will put it in. Oh, I agree, my girl. Cornerstonejamaica.org. On that website, you can share our website with family and friends. You can tell people to visit our website. There's a donate tab right there at the bottom. It's such an easy way to share for your friends and family, especially during the holidays, if they're looking for somewhere to give. Another huge thing that you guys could do for us is our social media platforms. We are living in 2020 and everything is on social media. And the best way that we can get our word out and the best way that you guys could help us out that's not financial is just liking and sharing our videos, our photos, telling your friends, any interaction that you have with our social media will help us out tremendously. If you'll give us a follow, that'll even help us out even more. And putting it up on your Insta stories or your Facebook stories just about Cornerstone would be such a huge help. So beyond just donating, which would be very beneficial, we're just asking that you interact with our social media and interact with our website. Share it to your family and friends so that we can continue doing what we love to do and keep giving us a reason to come down to Westmoreland.
And we can't wait to come back. Anybody have any questions before we say goodnight? This has been great. I think we'll
I wanted to say really quickly, if you look over in the chat, Bree, who is just our jack of all trades here at Cornerstone, she has put in our website or Instagram and our Facebook. So if you guys don't already have that, if you guys could just copy that and put it into your notes or something or put it online so that you don't forget. And I will be looking forward to hearing from all of you guys on our Facebook or Instagram platform.
Once again, Minister Williams, deep thanks for joining us. We'd like to have you on a monthly meeting sometime, if you don't mind. Likewise, for you, Nicolette, and all of our speakers, all of our education, all of our education people. You are warriors and we are in it to win this battle and we will. So good night, everyone.
Okay, good night. Thank you so much. Thank you, Cornerstone. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you.
Thank you. Thanks to all.
I'll turn off the lights. Guys, go. I'll turn off the lights.
Good night, everybody. Stay healthy.
Night, night. Night, Gary.
Good night, Latoya. Thank you. Hi, Joan.
Hey, Richard.
Hey, Gary. Oh, it was a great meeting, a great meeting.
Thank you.
I got in a bit late, but the fact is, I was listening to the whole meeting through. But I want to congratulate everybody because it was wonderful. And I love I love to see as it makes strides, makes strides. And thank you for all the work you do. And thank the minister for getting involved. I think it's wonderful that the government has full support behind it. And I want I want to compliment all the wonderful people throughout the island and yourself for the job you do to make Cornerstone such a contributing factor to the kids of Jamaica.
Thank you, Richard.
Thank you, Richard.
Patricia, you see your tenants are on the call here. You see them?
We had to scrub some things.
My wife, Sherry, everybody. Great job, Brianna and Crystal again. All right.
And Gary, can you hear me?
Yes, I can.
Okay, I just want you to know that I appreciate you reaching out to a member of my family who is when is fully behind you. You understand?
Yes.
Is fully behind you and for and is really going to be making a wonderful contribution with his collaborators. with his collaborators to Cornerstone.